Good evening, I'd like to welcome everyone to the Town Council Workshop of May 12th, 2023. I'll start with roll call, Counselor Meany.
Present.
Counselor McGuire.
Present.
Counselor Chappell.
Present.
And I'm Counselor Carter, and Town Manager Nate Rudy is with us virtually today. First item on the agenda is our road discussion revisit, and as we've been doing the last couple of workshops, we are working our way back through our hold list, items that were put on hold when we started the budget process. So since the budget process was extended this year, we are working towards revisiting each of these topics so that we understand where we left off, what information we're going to need for our thorough discussion at a workshop, and to identify any additional questions we may have for staff before that workshop. So the roads discussion, we initially started discussing this item in pieces, and so it's already kind of split into pieces. If you look at Packet Page 70, it's a, there's an email in there where I kind of summarized our last workshop, which was held last summer. And after that, we subsequently had a few more discussion. It comes up during budget season, it comes up in reference to winter maintenance. Individual roads have specific issues, D.R. Acres, and there's some residents here from D.R. Acres to listen in tonight. And then we also have driveway standards, inspections, et cetera. So the, the topic keeps coming up, and so what we're trying to do is figure out the best approach for us to address this all in one swoop, so that we can move forward and address the issues, so they don't keep coming up. So the first, if we, I think if we use that email to start, we can kind of go through the big buckets, but the first one is road standards and subdivision roads, were the two big buckets. And I think that one of the primary points that we've been talking about is the fact that Nate is from Hollowell, and when he came down here, finding out that we have so many categories, and we do winter maintenance on certain roads is a new concept, because up in northern Maine, they don't do that at all. So one of the items that we thought would be helpful for us is to compile information on what neighboring and like towns are doing in regards to private roads, winter maintenance in particular, but any other requirements being used. And Dan, I think that association, remind me of the...
Yeah, the Maine Alliance of Road Associations.
Yeah.
Yep.
They were going to do some data collection from towns, was that just lists of roads and not how?
Yeah, it was just, it was just strictly a matter of how many roads are out there that they were interested in.
Okay.
Though there are several bills before the legislature regarding the legal language around roads and road associations. One of them is to clean up the definitions. If you look at state statute, they refer to it as private roads, public ways, private ways, there's a lot of different labels, and none of them are well-defined. And so their goal is to try and straighten some of that out. And I think, I think MMA also is weighted in on this issue. Nate can probably speak to that if I'm, if I'm recalling that correctly. And there was, I don't know if you folks have had a chance to read it yet, but in MMA's monthly magazine this month, there was a large article about Wyndham and what Wyndham has done with its roads, which is kind of interesting, because I was kind of wishing that we'd got that covered, because we've been doing that for a while.
Oh, are they similar to what we've been doing?
Yeah, they've, they've had a similar situation where road associations are, you know, they run the spectrum from really well-run to nobody even knows who's in charge. And so they have actually kind of laid down the law and notified a lot of roads that they'll no longer be cared for after this particular year, unless they meet the criteria. I don't know all the criteria, a lot of it is similar to what we currently have. You know, on the books, I know that the Public Works Director has always struggled with staying in touch with road associations and knowing who to contact. And I know the chief has similar issues with those associations that have sisterings, which we were talking about the other day.
Yep. Okay, so I, I, I think that then that we probably do need to, Nate, I don't know what the best approach is, is to, especially, I mean Wyndham's a great example, but, and I know Raymond has far more private roads than we do mile-wise.
New Gloucester still has public roads that are gravel.
Yeah, New Gloucester, and, and maybe those five towns that we are supposed to be using the data from, that data set, so I think if we can pull together some information on not just what they're doing for the maintenance, but the standards they're using, because I think that's the other big category, which is, it's further on down, but what should our standards be? And I think in the more recent conversations we had, we've come to realize from a impervious surface standpoint, climate action, stormwater, all of these things come into play, that having a 60-foot wide paved surface is not a one-size-fits-all, and that potentially what we should do is have standards, suite or options for standards that better fit individual new development.
That was one of the things that drove the whole Stillwater Pines CZA.
Yeah.
The size of the streets and the changes that we made there. You know, there are, there are minimal, but there are expectations for winter maintenance. You've got to clear the brush, you know, three feet from the current edge of the road, you know, 14 feet up from the road. The Public Works Director usually runs all the roads with whoever the contractor is for that particular section, and, you know, we often get a call that, you know, there's one stretch or another or something that they'd like us to take care of before the ground freezes, so.
You have in the past for your road association?
Yeah, yeah, I have both hats, I have my Johnson Road Association hat on too.
Well, and I know when we first came on the council that, you know, Steve LaValle at the time had come to us and said it was at a point where he really had, just didn't have any names and numbers anymore. And so I know there was an effort where letters were mailed out, and people were given deadlines to provide new contacts, and if they didn't, they were going to be dropped from winter maintenance. Who has that list and how that's being updated, I'm not, I'm presuming it's in Public Works.
Yeah, I mean, we're all responsible, in the ordinance, it requires all the road associations to contact the town by, I think it's the first of September every year, with a list of officers and contact information, so. I mean, I'm of a mind that if somebody doesn't do that, you know, we send them a letter, you know, and we don't hear from them in 60 days, we just let them know they're done.
Yeah.
I mean, they, there has to be some accountability. Of course, I still have Ms. McGrath's letter, who was the town manager at the time when I moved here, that I used to get a mortgage to build my house, that said, oh yeah, the town's responsible for grading your road and plowing it, that's no problem. That letter's not worth anything anymore, unfortunately.
Right.
So Nate, I, I think that that's probably one thing for you to follow up with Tim, I'll leave, I'll leave it in the notes. And I know that he's just the interim Public Works Director, and a lot is going to depend on our budget vote, and whether or not that reorganization goes through this year, so.
It's a pretty easy fix, though, I mean, we've got the contracts for all the roads we do, so.
Yeah, I'd like to, yeah.
Not a heavy lift, I don't think.
Well, and I think that, you know, under Public Works, that if, if it isn't already out on the website, it should be, you know, that just the timeframe.
Yep.
You know, an easy summary document with a link to the winter maintenance ordinance, and then it's, you know, it's pretty straightforward, as you said, you have a time limit. They, he doesn't have viable contact information, a letter goes out, they've got 60 days, and then they're dropped. And if they do return the information, then they're good. But I, and I think Steve used to say that he would time the inspections around the same time, so that should be in that timeline too, that they would notify the road associations. I don't know if you've found that you get notification in the same timeframe, or it's been ad hoc every year?
It's, well, we only, we only hear if there's an issue they want us to resolve, and it's usually a, you know, an email or a phone call or something, and it is late, it's late fall, but before the ground freezes is really the, the threshold for, that they use. Once the ground freezes, there's not much we can do.
Okay.
But there are no standards for stormwater, there are no standards for, you know, there is a minimum standard for width, I think it's 16 feet. And we had to do some work back in the beginning to comply with, with some of those things. You know, we've had trouble getting the driveway ordinance applied to public ways. We've talked about, I've talked about that in the past. You know, improperly installed driveway on my road probably does more damage than it does on a paved road, so that ordinance now applies to driveways everywhere, so hopefully that will solve that problem.
Moving forward.
Yep.
Do the rules have anything to say about cars parked on the road when it's snowing?
No, there's no, we, the town, we talked about that at our other meeting, we don't have any traffic ordinances to that extent. The, the new ADU law is going to force us to cross that, that bridge.
Yeah.
Because with the ADU law, we're not allowed to require off-street parking, so then that means people can park on the road, which means if we have a snow emergency, we have to have the ordinance in order to be able to remove cars that are blocking the road. So it's kind of a snowball thing, it, it's not just about ADUs, it's about a bunch of other things too.
Right, and so it, the other big piece is that, you know, the LDs that are before the legislature now, especially around the definitions, and I know that the, the Commission on Discontinued Roads issued their report, and that had been put into some of the legislative bills, some of the recommendations. So, and then also, we had identified on that same Packet Page 70, that our subdivision ordinance refers to our comp plan to identify categories of roads, and the new comp plan doesn't have that information in it anymore, so, or not as straight line. I'm sorry Doug, I have Packet Page 20, Item 3A, but I don't know, you'd have to go back to that meeting to look at the Packet, but just to note that that was picked up in our conversation last time, that the subdivision ordinance refers to the comp plan categories of roads, as detailed in the comp plan it states, that's the sentence, and there is no category of roads in the new comp plan, it was probably in the old one, so if you want to make a note of that. And I think that the next one, making sure that if a subdivision, if the developers has intentions of seeking winter maintenance, that they're already doing that upfront, aren't they, Doug, as part of the planning board process? No? If a sub, a new subdivision comes in and the intent is for them to go for winter maintenance, or they, when is they notify the town, is it upfront?
So that, that was changed under the, Doug Webster, Planning Director. What happened, if you recall, is we got caught from a budgetary perspective, and so the, that portion of Chapter 400, the, now the street ordinance, was amended so that they needed to provide a letter, I think it says, I think it's January 15th.
Yep, that's correct.
Of the winter before they wish to, they intend to have, want the road to be winter-maintained, and there have been questions that have come up, you know, did, did they meet the 75% minimum number of lots and so forth?
Yeah, lots.
But, but that was done for budgetary purposes, to ensure that there were sufficient funds that were budgeted for the following fiscal year.
Okay. So that should also be on that summary of timelines, yeah?
I mean, we've allowed, we have made exceptions to that rule when people have come to us while we're still in the process of making the budget, because we've been able to make adjustments then, but it doesn't happen too often.
Yeah, yep.
It's worked pretty well, I think, not, not 100%, but it's working better than before that was on the books.
Right, and then the other item was driveway standards that you and Alec had been working on, updating those. Did that ever get finalized before Alec left, or is that it's still?
The, the concept that we were discussing in subsequent to Alec's departure, I've had some on-point discussions with our town consulting engineer. The concept is to have, have it sort of be a phased approach, if you will, and so there's the initial application, and if it looks like it's complicated, then the applicant's engineer needs to put together a design. If it looks like it's pretty straightforward, then it, you know, the, there's a X-size culvert placed at such and such a location. The difficulty comes in, in to, as to who makes that initial assessment, because if that initial assessment is wrong, and the applicant is told, oh, this is a slam dunk, put a 15-inch culvert back here, you're all set, and that turns out to not work, then Public Works ends up owning that, if you will. So my conversations with the town's consulting engineer, which is the safe route to go, is somewhere between $200 and $300 for them to make that initial assessment by the time they get up in their car, out to the site, generate a report and everything. And so the impediment to making the change at this juncture has been, is there the political will, and are, is it equitable, is it fair to have a fee that substantial for the initial determination? And so as a result of that, it's kind of been on hold.
Yeah, I, I feel pretty strongly that the Public Works Director really is the person who should make the first crack at it. I mean, you could come out to my house and look at my driveway, there's no culvert under my driveway. You could require a culvert under my driveway, but there's nothing upstream of it and nothing downstream of it. So I think, especially on roads like my own, the, where there aren't any stormwater requirements, it's a completely different kettle of fish. It would be nuts for me to have to pay $300 to have my driveway engineered.
Well, and I think that this, this was one of the reasons that we were considering the reorg in the Public Works.
Yes.
Department. So if we end up moving forward with that, and we have a public, I'm going to say, public services administrator with engineering, then it would be in-house, and then I think the fee would be...
Well, they would, I would think, be able to make a more determined assessment about whether it needed to be engineered or not.
Yeah.
Whether they were the one that was responsible for doing it would be another conversation.
Yeah, because like what you're saying, Doug, I mean, if we're paying Will to do this, we have to pay for him to get in his car, drive over, and take a look at it, and if we have someone who's an employee of the town, they're just going to head over and take a look at it, and that's just part of their job.
Yep, the, the real challenge is that there's, there's the full spectrum out there.
Yeah.
I mean, there are driveways that are, that are slam dunks, that don't need culverts, and, I mean, if, if it does need a culvert, where should the culvert be placed, how big does it need to be, how big is the catch, the subcatchment area above it, and so that initial determination, I think, is actually important, because if it's not done properly, part A, we're not giving fair, accurate information to the applicant, and part B, Public Works ends up owning any corrections that may be necessary if that determination's not made properly.
Right.
Well, that would be true on a town-owned road, but not a public access road.
My understanding of the council's prior position is that the driveway standards are applicable for all roads.
They are, but I've never seen the town take responsibility for a call on, on one of the public.
I think he's talking about the fix, if there was any mistake. But I mean, you're talking about the initial, I mean, if the new public services administrator goes out and says, okay, this is more complicated, then it just gets kicked to the applicant's engineer to come up with something. I mean, it's not our responsibility to engineer their driveway. Am I understanding that?
And presumably, there would be, there should be some sort of a review to make sure the culvert is large enough, et cetera.
Exactly.
But, but sort of triage, that was our concept.
Yeah, exactly, so we're sending them out to make that initial, this should be straightforward, you're all set, or you're, you're going to have to kick this to an engineer and make sure it gets designed properly.
I think there are other considerations too, like, you know, curve in the road, sightlines, the grade of the driveway where it meets the road, all of those things are still issues on public ways as much as they are on town roads or state roads. And right now, those don't get addressed either.
They, I know of some cases where there, if it's questionable, I know, I can't think of the exact locations, but I know of a handful at least where we have asked for documentation from either a surveyor or a PE stamp with regards to meeting site distance, and until we, until we received that information, the issuance of the driveway entrance permit was on hold.
Oh, I take that back.
There were a couple on, on North Raymond Road in particular, that people weren't too happy, but...
Well, North Raymond, North Raymond Road's a town road. I'm talking about the winter maintenance roads.
They'd still need a permit though, right?
They still require a permit, but the town never comes out and does anything for
You're saying it's the, the permit process would catch that line of sight?
I know that the permit process had, I, I don't, I'm not on the front lines of administering the permits, but I'm peripherally aware of several.
Yeah, I have too.
Applications that have hit that question, and until it was resolved, the permit was not issued.
Yeah.
What I'm not sure about is, is that same standard being applied to winter maintenance roads?
I don't definitively, that would be a code question.
I mean, I think it should be, but...
You mean existing or newer roads?
All of them.
So I think, I think what...
I mean, the, the issues around sightlines and curves and the rest of it apply no matter what the status of the road is.
Right, and I think that code is probably applying that same regardless if they have to issue permit.
It hasn't been historically.
Right, but I think it is now, but we can, we can, let's verify that, yeah.
Because that's a problem an association cannot solve on its own.
Not without coop, in, in most cases cooperative, property owners allowing and clearing.
Right.
But if it's a hill, or what they, traffic engineers, they call it a sag curve, if you've got a sag curve, that's hard to, that's expensive, you can, you can correct it, but it's expensive.
Yep.
Okay. All right, um, let's see. The other thing was apron requirements was the other one that was related to the driveways that we had previously talked about on public roads. And this was something that I think Alec had brought up.
Yeah, Stevie brought that up before, and I suspect his dad did before him, yeah, that one's been around for a while.
Yeah, that maybe the driveway standards includes a minimum apron requirement that actually works for Public Works?
I think, I suspect Public Works would endorse that. I can tell you from the relatively short period of year and a half, two years, that we had that on the books. What happened as a practical matter is a house X was getting its occupancy in February, and so we had to, the decision was made to collect sufficient escrow to ensure that that was done. And so not only was the town collecting the escrow, but the town sort of got in the business, if you will, of grouping those homes that weren't able to get the apron done because of the time of year that the houses were completed, the town ended up being in the paving business of private driveways. And so as a result of both of those, I think the impetus for the, the drive to require that fell off the radar.
Well, I think there's also, I think, a difference of opinion. I am not so much against the town's requirement to do that upfront. I mean, I understand the purpose of it, which is to protect the shoulder of the road. Where I think I part ways is that once the homeowner does that, I think it should be the town's responsibility to maintain that apron. Because, I'll use our road as a great example, the, there's a lot of, Westwood Road stops shortly after you go past Johnson Road, and all of the roads pass there are winter maintenance roads. Almost all the mailboxes for all of those houses are on the corner of Johnson and Westwood Road, that, and it's a fork in the road, so what would be an apron there is just dirt, and it's probably one of the most difficult things for us to maintain because of all the traffic. And I remember approaching Alex and saying, you know, look, if we pave this, you know, if we pay to pave this, will you take care of it after that? And it was like, no way, so, you know, I think there's got to be some middle ground there. Because from a maintenance standpoint, and the folks that live on Dier Acres know it as well as anybody else, as soon as you pay it, you're making a commitment to, a pretty permanent commitment to a way of life with living with that road, and we couldn't afford that.
All right, I can put that as a question.
What happened with that is, during the short period that we were practicing it, is the, the apron was being done, but it was not put on a sufficient base, and so it was breaking up very shortly, and so now, now we're talking about inspections to make sure that there's a sufficient base prior to paving the apron, and who does that, so I, I don't disagree with.
Yeah, no, I understand, I'm not being argumentative, yeah, I mean...
Well, it's a, it's a question, and we're supposed to be trying to identify all the things that need to be discussed and decided, so.
Some of that too is what the town uses for material for the shoulders of roads, you know, in the places where the town will use reclaim on the shoulder of a road, it stays in place, it supports the shoulder, it tends not to erode when you have some of these heavier rain events, but it's a lot more expensive than just putting gravel down and going back in the, in the warm months and, and grading that gravel back up on, onto the shoulder again. So I think there's a, you know, that's a conversation that we probably ought to have about town roads too, just as far as protecting our investment, because it costs us so much money to, to do that now.
Yeah, and I mean, that goes towards that, different categories too, paving versus gravel for road standards.
I know soils and water conservation folks would love it if we paved the section of Johnson Road that goes across Farwell Brook, because Farwell Brook's a major tributary to Little Sebagga Lake, and it comes from the bog there, which is, most of it's up in Raymond behind my house. It's interesting, because they want that part paved because they want to stop the erosion and the phosphorus issues that they have, but generally speaking, they don't like pavements.
I was going to say, generally, they like impervious instead, but, yeah.
It's kind of a situational thing, you know?
It is situational, which is what we were kind of talking about for the phosphorus ordinance last time. Okay, so, and then there was the, the question, I think we're hitting most of these. The other question that you had, Dan, is, is, and I think we pulled this information together for that association, was the number of miles in category, and I don't, did, did we have a subdivision category, or was it just public, winter maintenance, private?
I just remember it being winter maintenance.
Okay.
That's what I remember too.
Yeah, so I think we had, and you had asked for a list and/or a number of miles that are in subdivisions.
Well, subdivisions we require to be paved now, so for instance, I use Stillwater Pines again, where that's paved, but that's an HOA.
Less than 10 dwelling units can still be gravel.
You know, I understand that, but I think in, in this case, it's an HOA, it's still a paved road. And that one is somewhat unique in that that one is also required by the CZA to be striped, which is, you know, another expense that's, that hasn't historically been a part of an HOA's responsibility.
For the, the paved shoulder for bike pad.
I was going to say, yeah, I think part of that came from the fact that we are releasing the sidewalk standard for them, so we wanted to make sure the striping was there for protection on that side of the road.
And that's where I think that it would be, I don't think it would be a great expense to the town, for the town, you know, much like we go to the county, or, or the state, or GP COG to piggyback on their bids for salt or other things. I'd like us to create a process whereby those road associations or homeowners associations that have to take care of their own roads, and if they're paved... That have to take care of their own roads and if they're paved, have the ability to piggyback on the town's buy. Because they'll never get prices for paving that are as good as the town if they approach contractors individually. And the same thing is striping, you know, they're, we're gonna pay to, we pay to stripe roads, so. Having an, an association reimburse the town for striping on their road doesn't seem like too difficult a thing to arrange.
Yeah, and I think the issue there is, um, was really timing and location. I mean, if you're paving, and this recently just came up. If you're paving, you know, Waymouth Road and there were a road right next to it, then that would be really easy for them to jump on. Because the business doing the paving would be willing to do it because they're not moving, having to move their equipment. So maybe the process to do that is making sure that if we have, and we do normally have the list of projected paved roads. That there's some type of notification process done to let the road association knows that paving's coming to your, close to your road next year. And, you know, that maybe that opens that door a little bit. The other thing that we.
I think that's on the association really. I mean, we list the roads, so it'd take two seconds for one of the board members of the association to.
We do, but is it easily found?
No, but I think it could be.
Budget, yeah, so I think maybe, maybe just we end up posting it again on that public works that maybe they post the, the roads.
I mean, I had hoped to do that with Westwood Road because they just paved Westwood Road and I was hoping to get in on possibly getting the. Apron of Johnson Road paved, but that ship has sailed. I missed my chance.
Which, if I may, which underscores the importance of keeping a current database of contact people for the road associate. Uh, I'm seeing that as a common denominator, I guess is my observation, so.
Yeah, and the other thing that we talked about and I think this is something we were gonna ask me in Alliance of Road Associations at one point. Is, um, is there a way to allow road associations to band together, create a co-op of associations? And then they potentially would be able to save some money if they reached a certain scale, uh, if they had like problems.
My sense from talking to the folks at Mara is that, that. Associate, it's kind of like the Wild West, you know, there isn't really a standard for associations, though they have. You know, they have created sample bylaws and sample documents for people to use if they're creating an association, but.
They're not seeing a lot of compliance with one specific approach.
There aren't as many, I don't think there are as many, um, private paved subdivision roads. As there are unpaved roads, so I think that's kind of their, their emphasis.
Especially up north.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I read the report from the discontinued road commission and, yeah, some of the examples and testimony were a little frightening. Actually, um, up north because it is literally the Wild West, people walking on the road and being accosted. Because someone else doesn't think they have the right to walk on the road type thing, so, um, yeah, I'm sure it's, it varies. Depending on where you are in the state, okay.
So I don't think there're gonna be too much help for us in the near term.
And there's that legality of it, that was the other issue that we weren't exactly sure of. Although I know we, they allow jumping on bids, but what, what are the requirements there? Like you said, the reimbursement is key, obviously.
I mean, if you have trouble with someone speeding on a, on a private road, you know, you're not gonna get much help from the sheriff's department. They don't see themselves as having jurisdiction there because it's private property, so that's, you know, one of the things that. They're hoping to try and get straightened out in Augusta so that, um.
It'll be a little less.
It, it'll be a little, well, yeah, it'll just be a little better defined, so.
Okay. Um, and so I think that covers all the big buckets. Dan, um, you'll see that the Gore, the latest road study was included in the packet.
Did see that.
Yeah, that helps a little bit because that does give us some, um, color coding of the roads. We can better understand the roads in each category, although like you said, they're kind of adjusting the category. And then it also has the, the list, which is the most important thing, and I think that starts on page. Twenty-five is where they, they have the conclusion. I don't know if it's twenty-five in the packet, I've got my report with me, so I think it's a little further in the packet.
I created a, I don't know if you remember, I did something, it was, it was pretty soon after we got on the council, I think, so it's like five or six years ago and. I can't find the darn thing. I put together a plan for like seven years to catch up.
You dumped it in a spreadsheet.
Yeah, and I can't find it for the life of me, so I'll have to do that over again, but I think that.
Let me, let me first see if I have it stuck somewhere before you recreate it.
I do think it would behoove us to have a ten-year plan, if you will, that, you know, set a goal that in ten years we're, we're actually gonna catch up.
Yeah, I mean, I think we've done a good job of holding the line and it's been expensive and it's expensive this year in the budget. And other towns are cutting, but we're trying not to do that because we've checked the erosion, we're just not catching up.
Yeah.
And so we, we, in order for us to hold the line, we have to keep the, unfortunately, the very expensive dollar line in there.
Well, the wait listing will help. I mean, the wait listing will definitely help us on Shortmail, it'll help us on, on Shortshaker.
And it will help us on Brown.
And it will help us on Brown Street, so I mean, those are other ways that we can, yeah, Marie's another one, yeah. And even I think, you know, a conver, I don't know about Waymouth because the state pays Waymouth, so I don't think that one, like North Raymond is ours anymore. But, um, all of Mail is ours.
But we, we, actually, we haven't, we, we kept Waymouth, they, they wanted it and we kept it because.
Okay.
They were gonna list it, it was actually gonna be like Egypt Road where we can barely get them to come, ever.
Or North Raymond Road.
Yeah, and we just weren't willing to allow Waymouth to go the way of Egypt.
And I think that's true of Mail too.
It's a little more money.
State, thank you, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, and I think Stevie had approached us with trying to get the state to take it over and we were like, no.
In the first part of North Raymond Road, I believe, that there's, there's some road classification detail in the. Act, the transportation chapter in the comp plan.
I think the state is responsible up to Egypt now.
I think that's true.
Yes, from Shaker to.
Is, is, um, is still our responsibility.
Yeah.
For winter maintenance or for paving?
For, for everything, yeah, and that's why the Shortshaker to May, Mayberry is such a mess. Cause they put some shim on it last year, the year before, and so it's, it's in their rotation now and they're gonna wait X amount of years to come back.
Well, according to the road study that from Gorel Palmer we have, that all of North Raymond Road was a state road, so I don't.
Oh, really?
I don't think so.
I'm, I'm just, I have it up.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, we'll have to check. That's a good catch if that's the case.
From North Raymond Road to, uh, Egypt, oh, sorry, where am I?
That sounds right.
North Raymond Road from.
Shaker.
Mayberry to Egypt Road is a state road and North Raymond Road from Shaker Road to Mayberry.
State road, yeah.
And then, oh, I, you know what, I was mixing up.
Once you get past Egypt.
Yeah, that's right.
Egypt Road from North Raymond Road to Raymond Town, sorry, I was going, I was still reading that.
That's alright.
There's no doubt that North Raymond Road is going to become a much busier road. In fact, when you go up into Raymond and Poland beyond, um, they spent a ton of money, I don't think it was the state, it must have been Poland. They completely, they completely rebuilt that road from Route eleven down to the Raymond Town Line.
Big money.
Really?
Yeah, I mean, they, they.
Well, they did Route eleven too.
They dug it down and, and rebuilt the base and everything. I was really surprised by that, but, um, I don't know if that was because. They wanted the state to take that part of the road and maybe that was part of their deal, I don't know what their agreement is with that. But there's no doubt in my mind that the state is gonna want all of North Raymond Road eventually.
At some point. Make it a priority three like Yarmouth and never, never come back.
Yep.
Okay, let's not go there, alright.
I mean, it would be nice to get a hard shoulder on Egypt, much like they have on Route eighty-five and then on North Raymond Road up to Egypt. It would be nice if we could get that on their radar.
That needs a shoulder so.
I think there's right-of-way challenges there, I believe.
Zoe's right-of-way challenges.
Yeah, name, name a part of town there isn't.
No, no, that's alright, I just figured that's a given.
Yeah, and I mean, eventually, you know, we've got the Wilkes Beach, you know, eventually, once we get.
Yeah.
Yarmouth and Main Street projects engineered and planned, we're gonna be, have to start looking elsewhere in town. We've got the Libby Hill Road project hopefully covered with an earmark potentially, but then you've got Wilkes is, is high on the list and has been in the past. Because of the need for sidewalks and stormwater that's impacting Crystal Lake and all the rest, so I'm sure. Maybe Dan, to your point, that that, and the shoulder, that's all gonna be probably wrapped into that.
Yeah, that might be something that we approach the state with, actually.
Yeah, as a, a broader plan for that area versus just the road.
Yeah, I've noticed just, um, more bikers on that, on North Raymond Road lately and it's so dangerous. Like, because it's hilly and the road is bad and it's just cars don't slow down, so I don't know.
Yeah, it's very dangerous. Okay, and then the final, final item is, um, specific road issues. And so we, and I don't think, we had for a little while, we had a possible Ramsdale Road issue, but that has never come back around. Is that accurate? They went to planning board for like an advanced conversation and that's the last I ever heard of it and I, my last update was it never came back.
Is that the subdivision?
This, no, this was the gentleman who was going to, um, dead-end his section of Ramsdale and build a. Drive around and then he, but he was looking, we do ma.
Bypass.
Yeah, he was essentially doing a small bypass and then the issue was gonna be, the, we provide winter maintenance on Ramsdale. And he wanted us to pick up the bypass and maintain the dead-end too.
Don't think anything's moved on that for at least, uh, five to six months.
And because I mentioned it now, we'll get an email tomorrow, just so you know.
I don't know.
It won't be because they're watching, it's just, that's just Murphy's Law.
I don't think he had all his neighbors on board with that.
Yeah, yeah, okay, yeah, alright, and then we have Deer Acres, of course. And, um, I don't know if there was any additional specific information we had, um, wanted or needed from Deer Acres. Since we have them here. I know there was some engineering work that was being done or consulted on some engineering for what, what it was gonna take to fix the road. I'm staring at Gerald right now, but I'm not, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I wanna just make sure that we identify whatever information we need for.
We've met a couple times with.
Yeah, you have to go up there, sorry.
Name's Gerald Fawcett, uh, forty-two Derekas Road, and, uh, we've had several meetings with, uh, Will Haskell at Gorel Palmer. Uh, what we could do to improve the, uh, the structure of the road and everything in between and, uh. Most recently, the, this morning, we met with, uh, Randy Laboudier with Owen Haskell. And, uh, we vented in an agreement with them to do a, a survey of the Derekas Road from Gore Road. Point six tenths of a mile in to where the Deer Acres Road Association is to identify. The road, the possible challenge of ledge, rocks, trees, boundaries and stuff like that. To give us a, a foundation going forward with our plans to continue to repair the road and, and maintain it, so it's. Uh, it's a work in progress and, you know, a very expensive one that we're undertaking and that's why it's a, a very. Important reason why we're here today is to, to help with that. If I could elaborate just a little bit more, if that's okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
And, uh, what we've seen in, is we have the Gore Road on one end of Deer Acres and Brown Road on the other end, two public ways. And we are the intermediary, being the Deer Acres Road between those and, uh, just the amount of traffic. That comes in between, that comes in the Brown Road, delivery trucks of all, you know, UPS, Amazon, school buses, you know, it's just a. It's not just forty-three homeowners using that road, it's a, it's a continual thoroughfare. And most recently, I think in the last year, on three occasions, correct me if I'm wrong, that there's been problems, accidents, trees down on Route eighty-five and. That has been the bypass around Route eighty-five that has increased more, so it's just, it's a very unique. Parcel of road between those two public ways and that's why we, uh, we really appreciate you talking to us. And see if we can't come to a, a solution where it's a, it's a win-win for everybody. And so it's, it's just.
And I, I thank you very much for that, um, and I, the other issue I think that we had outstanding was the possibility of a gate. Usage of a gate and whether that had been, um, talked to at all amongst your, uh, association.
I think there was a gate at one point that was taken down, like a long time ago, something as that was.
Yeah, I don't know the history of that, but, um, that was one of the possible options that was on the table. Was to have some sort of gate where there was like a key code and only people who live on the road would be able to use it, forcing everyone to. Not use it as a bypass.
Sure, and so it was talked about and wasn't met with a whole lot of favorable comments and stuff, just, uh, for many reasons. And I don't know if you have anything you wanted to say on that, Bruce or, or Dave? Yeah, a little bit more history.
Hi, I'm Dave Kramlet from fifty-seven Deer Acres Road, uh, yeah, we, the gate that, it was a cable. Years ago when I was a little kid, uh, there was a cable that went across right at, uh, the edge of. What it's, what is sixty-two Deer Acres and. I grew up at fifty-eight Deer Acres, first one on the road that was living year-round. And that cable came down, I think it's still up in the woods. Buried, uh, but, yeah, there was a cable there and, so that, that road. Deer Acres Road has been open to access for fifty, fifty-plus years. So, I mean, the idea of you putting another gate up, our biggest concern was liability, yes, we could put a gate up, but. Uh, what happens, you haven't been there when they've shut down Route eighty-five and they have. Told people there, you have to go out around one-twenty-one and they say, I just need to get to Gore Road. We stopped them and said, we're asking, uh, that this is a private road, we'd like you, uh, to. Let the town know that you're getting directed across a private road to get to where you're going. And as we asked people, some of them said, yeah, I'm going over to the turnpike. No place to turn around because there's fifteen cars behind them trying to get through. So, I mean, that's it, it's, it's a tough thing, uh, it's been open and it puts more of a damper on. Our members and everybody in that area to close that off if we closed it off, but at the same time, not everybody in the area pays. To maintain the road, so.
Yeah, right. Any other questions or thoughts of information we might want to have? I mean, I, I, I think it would be helpful to understand the other associations in the area who are using your road.
Yeah.
We're not all familiar with all of, I know there's Little Sebago something.
Lodges.
Lodges, thank you, um, so having that information available for when we have the discussion would be very helpful for us. You know, the number of houses in that association because they're using, potentially using your road as well. If that makes, yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I had gone through and put together a whole presentation one of the times we came here. That showed all the different associations and the number of properties in each association and. I wanna say Little Sebago Lodges is over a hundred and thirty-six, we still, we have people coming that are on Gore Road. Yeah, Gore, coming down over the hill from Gore Road, they come down the road to go across our road, I don't know why, but they do. And then we also have people from Lions Point Association, uh, coming through, not so many from Area A. Which is Northern Oaks, but, uh, there's a potential of over three hundred and fifty people over in that area. That you could go across the road, plus all the traffic if it gets, you know, bypassed.
Yeah, and then there's, I would imagine, guest traffic and things during some.
Krista, you, did you have another thought?
Oh, I just, I was just wondering, because I thought I recalled that Raymond did the winter maintenance out there because it was kind of out of our loop.
Uh, no, Deer Acres doesn't have winter maintenance. It's, I think you're thinking of the Gore Road.
I think I'm thinking of Gore.
It's the part of the Gore Road, yeah.
Yeah, I just.
The inter-local agreement that we have.
Right, okay, yeah, I was just thinking if we might wanna consult with them about anything they've encountered, but.
We have a contractor that works down in amongst the other associations.
Okay.
But the town of Raymond only does that portion of Gore Road.
And that was in exchange for.
For us doing North Raymond Road up through to.
Which is cheaper because we could do it in-house.
Sure.
And it wasn't part of the private contracts.
Okay.
It's a.
So that actually made Gore Road uh s- uh savings for the residents because eventually, we, we gave them uh equipment. And because we're paying less for winter maintenance, I think it was like year ten, we'd end up saving taxpayer money versus.
Yeah, I understand the rationale, I just, I was just, I was confusing um the winter maintenance and where it was exactly. I was wondering if they, if they were doing winter maintenance in Raymond. But perhaps it's a question for our contractor who is doing winter maintenance on those private streets, like what they've run into.
Well, actually, I know from talking to um Public Works, they're always concerned actually about keeping a contractor for that section of road, just because um there's a lot more constraints over there.
Yeah, we've, uh, the last bids, last two years in a row, we've had one bid come in. And in fact, we got zero bids on one, we had two bids separated and we got zero bids. And I think we went to the person who did the, came in on the first bid and asked them to please do the second bid and they agreed to do it. Um, so we do have a concern there because I, um, it's gonna be more difficult moving forward. Um, they just don't, um, the equipment just doesn't last, the smaller equipment, and so it's, it's costly. I can't remember what the increase in the budget line this year was for the winter maintenance roads, but it was.
Exactly.
Exactly.
It was substantial.
Yeah.
You'll have to go back up there.
Just wanted to, to mention is to follow up on your question about, you know, the other associations and, you know, that David mentioned. Along with the residents of there, what we also see is it's, the delivery trucks are coming down one way and going the other. They're not going out Brown Road and coming back in Gore Road, they're coming across Deer Acres, you know, the fuel trucks, the UPS trucks, FedEx, and it's just because it's convenient and it's just there. So it's not just the people, it's all the services coming to and from Little Sebago Lodges and, and vice versa over there in Lions Point and Northern Oaks, it's, it's uh, I, when I'm home, I travel a lot for work and stuff. When I'm home over there doing work, it's, it's continual delivery trucks and stuff, you know, on an hourly basis. It's, so it's just not people, it's the bigger vehicles on a road that's not really designed, it's a camp road.
Yeah, no, it's not designed for any of that.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Gerald.
Bruce Fochet, thirty tier, thirty-two Deer Acres Road. So to add a little bit to what Gerald said, uh, there's the service vehicles, but the school buses now use that as part of their route. I don't know how long they've been doing it, but I see a six-thirty and eight-thirty and then in the afternoon. So you, you were seeing four runs and that would cost them an extra four miles up and around to four or five miles maybe, up and around to uh not use that road, just to kinda give you a sense of all the kind of traffic we're seeing. And I would offer this up, about a year ago, a town official called me and said he would like me to show him this neighborhood so he could understand it. Any one of us would be willing to spend, it'll take you about ninety-seven minutes to slowly drive and see all the different roads that interface with this little road uh on some occasion, and we'd be happy to just take you around and show you what the interfaces are. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other questions or thoughts on that? Nope?
All right, ma'am.
All right, Nate?
Counsel, I'd just like to add that I was contacted by someone on Ramsdale Road after the heavy rainstorm last week. And they uh, they were requesting assistance from Public Works in the form of a grader to come work on their road and/or some material to use for reconstructing the road. Because it had washed out pretty severely and the question that I asked to the caller was, can you identify whether the damage to the road was made by the washout? Uh, or really the, the claim, behind the claim was that because vehicle traffic had been diverted down Ramsdale Road because there was another road that was introversible, uh, the name slips my mind at the moment.
Campbell Shore.
Campbell Shore Road was introversible for a little while, that uh that was what caused all the damage to the road. And I asked if there was any documented, you know, any pictures, anything like that to substantiate that. And I haven't, um, I haven't received any material to that effect, but um, we, we advise that we're not able to provide that assistance. Uh, it's outside of the terms of the winter road contract and we're limited in what we can do as far as using town resources to repair uh a road that's not owned by the town. Uh, it's a difficult circumstance, but obviously for the residents and, and also for the town because we wanna be able to help wherever we can and we understand the urgency. We, we just feel a bit limited there. So gentleman I spoke with said they were going to continue working with the private contractor to try to get their road graded and repaired and that we would talk again at a later time. I have, haven't yet heard back from him, but I'm sure we'll talk again. I just wanted to bring it up to you as ju- another example of the, the, the difficult gray area that we get into where um people's um impressions of what the town's responsibilities are there are, are different than what we understand our responsibilities to be. And we, we would just like to get clarity for everyone about where we stand on that. It's never that we don't want to be helpful, it's that we do have restrictions and legal restrictions on what we can and can't do. So I, I would agree with counsel, this is an important topic to take on and to get some clarity or understanding about how Gray is going to address the matter. And it is, it is certainly my experience that the way that the Sebago Lakes municipalities handle um public easements uh is different than what most of the state does. And I don't say that to say it's better or worse, it is just as the um, the Macon Municipal Association Magazine article demonstrated, it's, it's kind of like a find, find the right fit and then make sure that what we're proposing fits with the staff sheet and local ordinances. And there's, uh, as you have illustrated in your conversation already, a lot of complexity to that and it's gonna take a lot of time and work on the part of the planning office and me on the administrative side to pull all of that together. So we'll just need to get some guidance from you on how to approach that, how to prioritize that work, and I understand the urgency.
Great, thanks Nate, that's a great example.
Sandy, can I?
Yeah.
I don't think there's much confusion about what we can and can't do. I think it's actually pretty clear. I think there's unhappiness with the current definition of what we can and can't do. And I think that's really, there, there's two things at work there, there's always an influx of people moving into town. So I have this conversation lots of times when, you know, people realize we don't have trash pickup or people, what do you mean they don't take care of the road, or I mean, all of these conversations. And I think as, as people move more frequently, I think you get more people coming into the loop. So I think having an easy way for people to find out is part of it. But some of it is just people not being, you know, will buy a place and not even dream that the town doesn't take care of the road. Now, the realtors, I think, actually have helped a lot. Um, because now, um, every time a piece of property goes up for sale on Johnson Road, inevitably I get a call from an attorney or a realtor looking for the bylaws and things. So I think that, and the banks are a lot more savvy now because associations can lean property for non-payment of dues. So there's that experience too. But I think really what it comes down to is that people want the town to take care of their roads. And um, we have this pretty clearly delineated division between what's a public road and what's a pri- and what's not a public road. And the question is really, are we gonna change that?
Yep. That's a good summary. All right, anything else on that one? Okay, with that, we'll move on to our, thank you very much for all coming out and sorry you have to walk the long way around because of the floors. Um, so this will, um, this will go back in the queue just so that you're aware. Um, there is an election coming up next month and then the new council will um take a look at the work plan for the coming session and make decisions on what's first and what's second, third, fourth, fifth. And so you'll, you'll hear more information, um, this is one that's high on the list.
Yeah, I think this is one that we need to just grab the bull by the horns and, and figure it out.
Yeah, just get it done. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks. Next item is uh Teams training and Kyle will be joining us in the chambers.
Oh, boy.
And believe it or not, Krista, I actually successfully remembered and was able to set up a couple in Teams.
Oh, good.
Yeah, so that, if that is any sign, Dan, it's pretty easy. Because it was like a mu- month, a month and a half ago when I got the demo.
As long as there's a cheat sheet, I should be okay.
Yeah, yeah, I think once you do.
Have a nice weekend, Doug.
Thanks, Doug.
Thanks, Doug.
I think when I uh.
Okay.
Door.
Door.
Just kick the rock, kick the rock, alarm.
Okay.
All right, have a nice weekend.
Does anyone know how to turn on the alarm?
Yeah, I do.
Yeah.
I have to look it up, but I got it in my phone.
Oh, I can do the alarm.
Okay.
All right, yeah, so.
Hello, counsel.
Hi, it's the man behind the one-way glass.
It's Oz.
I'm gonna forget how to talk and forget how to use the computer.
Man behind the curtain, just watch.
Um, so I am happy to show you folks today Microsoft Teams. Uh, Microsoft Teams, like most things we use here in the town of Gray, uh runs in the ad, uh the um Microsoft Office Suite. So that includes um Excel, Outlook, PowerPoint, Word, et cetera. Those are the most famous ones, but one of the ones that have really grown in popularity really since the pandemic is Microsoft Teams and for good reason. Um, as I will show you, uh, I'll give you an overview of Teams today. So I'm sharing my screen here and you're seeing my Teams, so you're gonna see a lot of stuff that if you were to start up Teams, you wouldn't see. Uh, but I just have, I use Teams every day. There are quite a few staff members here who use Teams every day now. We're um, we're really trying to push it and um that's because it's a really robust program.
Sorry, I didn't mean to.
Can you see it?
Yeah, I can see it.
Okay. Um, so where Teams can be really applicable to the town council is in the task list feature of Teams. So if we're looking at Teams right here, you see that there are various parts uh that we can use on Teams. One is a chat function that we, where staff here can talk amongst us ourselves as like an instant messenger. There's a Teams function, which is what I'm in right now. There's a calendar function, which functions quite similar to Outlook. There's a calling function, so if you want to call a staff member, you can do that too. But we're gonna focus today on Teams, the Teams section within Microsoft Teams. It can get kinda confusing, but I'll, I'll walk you through it.
Ran out of names.
Well, and the easiest way to access this I have found is like when you open your Outlook and you click on and there's an icon that says Teams and you just click on it and it brings you right to the screen.
There are a few ways to access Teams, that's certainly one of them. One is to download the application to your computer and then the other way is to access it directly online. They want you to use Teams.
Yeah. There's separate apps for each, I have, I've just been using the web browser services, but there are separate apps for each functionality, right, that you can download, is that right?
Each functionality is.
Like Teams and Microsoft, Excel and Word and, yeah.
Yeah, and that's indeed probably the most popular way to do it.
Okay.
Yeah, from wherever you are, you can access these things. So you'll see on the left-hand side here, I have, I'm a member of a few teams. There's a town of Gray Communications Team where myself and Josh and Mohammed, we, we conduct business. Um, I'm the FOA guy for the town, so I have a FOA team for myself just to stay organized. And there's a couple of town council ones that we've set up as demos um for situations just like this. So on one of my teams, there's a Town Council Related Projects and Activities Team. And so when we are within this team, this is where we can view the list of to-do items. And there's quite a few things to look at here, so I'll walk through each one step by step. Let me get this out of the way here, okay. So I believe Sandy set up two examples so far in this team. One has to do with parking ordinance and one has to do with land for mains, future grant conversion. I have here an example that I'm going to use today to walk you through how to set up a task in Microsoft Teams. So this item here is about pop-up commercial ordinance. And it's just a list of notes from a workshop that Sandy provided me for use today and I'll be happy to use it to illustrate how we can use Teams to our advantage.
Can you switch them? Because the TV is showing the Zoom participants on the right side, so I think they'd rather have you.
Is this better?
Yes.
Okay.
I think that is. That way it won't get cut off by the.
I have, yeah, I have limited real estate here to.
Oh, well, I guess that doesn't help very much because it trunkeys it.
Uh, it may be, oh, you know what?
You see what I'm saying? There we go. Yeah, now you can switch them back and it'll work. Sorry.
That's, that's why I'm here. Okay, all righty. So we have here on the left a, uh, just some notes that can be used to help create a task. So as you can see on the left-hand side, there are several items as part of this uh project. So like reviewing uh some ordinance and perhaps clarifying some language about the mobile vendor ordinance. And uh put forth a site plan review to the uh planning board and our review committee, et cetera, et cetera. So over here in Teams, what you can do is you can add a task by clicking Add a Task. And we can enter a, a task name here, so we can do pop-up commercial ordinance. And I've learned that when other people are watching, I can't type to save my life. Um, so you can set a due date, so let's just say we want this done by June first.
Hey, you know, Dan.
And here's a neat feature, so you can assign people to this item. And you'll notice you're all here already along with a few staffers. So when you assign uh someone to a task, they will get notified. Teams will not let them forget that you have a task before them and you need them to do it. So let's say, uh, if we want Council McGuire to work on this with Doug and maybe Nate and let's throw in Sandy. So because Microsoft Teams is part of the Microsoft Office Suite, this is already hooked into like your graymain.org email address. It's all connected, there's no, there's no kind of manual linkage needed between Teams and our Microsoft accounts. It's really handy, we can just assign people based on who is in our organizational database that Microsoft has. So once we're satisfied that these are the people we want working on this project, we can then click Add Task. Now, you'll notice pop-up commercial ordinance is now its own entry on our to-do list. So I'm gonna click on pop-up commercial ordinance and there are quite a few more options we have here besides the one we just filled in. So if you wanna add a label to this task, um, you can do that. You can also create your own label if you want, but let's say if, if we knew that, you know, pink meant something important to us, we can label it like that. We have, uh, so far we only have one bucket in this, in this task list. You can have multiple buckets for like maybe um priority work, secondary work, or maybe certain counselors' work, et cetera. But we only have one bucket so far and it's called to-do, so we're gonna leave it just like that. We have, we can note that this item has been started already, or it's not started, or it's completed, which will always be nice to do. But let's say it's in progress right now. We can set the priority for this, for this project. So let's just say it's really important. The start date, just set it today, why not? The due date, we already set as the first. If this is a repeating event, a repeating task, we can set it to repeat as often as we want. In here, we have a text box for notes. And then additionally, we have a checklist function.
So just to interrupt.
Yeah, please.
So the first section of my write-up, the consensus of the council would likely be the notes. Or to describe what the task is about.
Was there a, I can't recall when we went over this. Is there a word limit or tag?
No.
On that field?
Well, and then the next item, the next thing he's gonna get to is your checklist and that allows you to add individual. So right now in the, the, this lovely thing, I have the description, but then I also have to start listing everything that's gonna happen. Oh, we've decided X need, you know, we need to do a review of the flea market, farmer's market ordinance. I'd have to have that all in this text and now with Teams, you can have the description, but then create a checklist that lists every single little task that has to happen in order for that to be completed, which I think is awesome.
A lot more, yeah.
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 Yeah, much more usable.
More readable, like just looking at it.
The work, the way it's organized, yeah. Yeah, the, the current task list would scare most people.
Yeah, exactly. Cause you're just trying to.
Full credit to you folks for having such a robust Excel sheet, but it could also be somewhat intimidating and perhaps not as accessible.
My favorite application, can you tell?
So I did just copy and paste this little intro description into the notes section here on Teams. And now if we take a look at the steps needs to be taken for this, like reviewing this ordinance. I'm just gonna copy this onto the checklist and that'll be my first item.
That's nice.
It's really nice. And I'll have him open the one that I did for the land for mains future.
So let me, before I move on, I'm going to just note a couple of things. Next to the notes section here, you have an option that says show on card. The card is referring to is what we see right here.
Oh, nice.
Like your home screen.
Oh, that's really nice.
So I have the notes showable on the card and now I can also have the checklist showable on the card. But you can only have one or the other, unfortunately.
If I, if I'm jumping ahead, let me know, is, there must be a reporting function to this.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right before we.
Somewhat hysterical giggle from behind.
Well, okay, here's the thing. Krista and I asked the exact same question and we stumped Kyle during the demo. And then Kyle went and researched it and sent it to us. But we didn't, we didn't, I didn't have the instruction on how to do it. So right before this, I walked in there and said, Dan's gonna ask about the reporting, so you need to.
It's really easy. I'll, I'll show you after this.
I think it's good to be predictable in some ways.
Yeah, that's right. Oh, and this, the other feature I really liked too is once you're done the checklist.
Yeah, let me just add a couple more items here for the checklist. So let's just say we have these three items here. So as people complete the items, we can check off. And now you'll notice here, it might be kinda hard to see, but it has one out of three items of the checklist are complete.
Yep.
And if you reopen it, scroll down, it's still there, it's just crossed out.
Yep.
So you don't lose it.
Yep. So.
Can you assign individual parts of the checklist?
Of the checklist? No, so what I would do is I would just.
But you can reassign the whole thing. So say it was.
Toss it back.
Yeah, you could toss it back and forth. So if you got one done and somebody else needed to step in, you could assign it to that person.
Yeah, or you could put people's initials in the beginning of the line or something like that.
That's what I, that's what I would do, yeah. Otherwise here, there is an option to add attachments. So if you're working with specific.
So, okay, so yeah, and I, and, and so the, the notes I've been doing, I've, I started doing because I was trying to figure out how this might work. And so I think go forward when, just as a suggestion, when a, when a new topic comes up and we put it on to say, is there support to move forward? And if there is, what do we need for information? It doesn't have to be the chair, but one counselor should take responsibility to do that quick write-up. And then you can, you can load it right in here. And then if it ends up sitting for three or four months, it's not one person trying to dig through their notes. What did we agree to? It's already.
Well, it's like today, you know, you could, you could attach the, you know, the road, the road report to this particular thing.
Exactly.
You would always have that.
Exactly.
Right, it's not just the notes we take, which are important, but all the documents we try to reference at 8,000 different places.
Exactly.
The bazillion different, yeah. The crates of paper I have at home that I can't even look through anymore because it's.
We'll try to cut down on that.
I do appreciate it.
And the last thing on here I'll show you is just the, you have the option to have comments. So let's say I was working on this and I was like, oh, I was delayed doing my task. I could add that comment.
Or I'm waiting for so-and-so to get back to me.
Yeah, or you couldn't find, or you're having trouble finding information or whatever it was, yep.
And it shows up down here.
Does that notify everybody assigned to the task that the comment was made?
I don't, I don't think so. Oh, and I'll be upfront. I know, I know a lot about Teams. I don't know everything.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll be happy to.
That's what that help section is for.
Yeah.
Well, Kyle is our help.
I can find, I can find the answers if I don't know it off the top of my head. But it's important to note that you cannot go back and edit comments, nor can you delete them.
Yeah, so the.
Oh, interesting.
If you wanna put something like, go back up to the top, what is it called? Description? Notes. That you can, you can edit and delete. You can, there's no limit. Comments. Once a comment's posted, it's there forever.
Like if you took an action and wanted to put a note on.
Yeah, so just be careful with what you put.
Yeah, I don't get into trouble that often.
So that is how you create a task and it's super accessible. I think, you know, this is laid out pretty well. Microsoft knows what it's doing when it comes to how employees can interact with each other and with projects. Let me just note also that we are currently viewing this to-do list in the board view. As you can see up in the, upper right, right here, board, but you can also choose a list view. That changes the user interface in a different way.
Isn't that lovely?
You're gonna love this, the charts function, so that once you have multiple tasks going.
No more pivot table for me.
Yeah. You'll see which ones are in progress or late or not started, which ones by priority, you know, who's assigned to what here.
This is where the comp plan will, I mean.
It'll be, you'll be able to gather.
It would be so much easier to manage that.
Can you open the land for mains, future grant conversion? So I just wanna, and I didn't realize I could show it on the card, so I'll do that. But, so what I did is I used this one as an example of a converted one. So what I'm gonna be doing is taking these.
And putting them in.
And putting them in here. And so you can see that I set it up similar and then under notes, I just kinda, I tried to summarize what's here. Some of them will be pretty easy, others will be a little harder because it's a lot, but. And then if you go down, this was nice because I actually am able to use the checklist from the state for the conversion. And you'll notice I, I didn't, I stopped at obtain the yellow book appraisal because if the National Park Service decides that still water isn't gonna work, then that will end this task and we'll have to find another location to start a new conversion. Although they may come back and put a stipulation on it and then I'd add a task after that. But I didn't bother load the rest of the task because they're dependent on prior, private tasks.
They may require us to build teams courts up there.
Yeah, and I was able to upload the main conversion checklist. Like as you said, it's a document that Kristen is going to refer to as we walk through this process. And every time we have to try to find where, where'd I put that? And now it's just right in there. Yeah. So I told Kristen to ignore the tasks I was assigning to her, but then tomorrow I'll be like, they're real.
They're real, get to work.
Well, have, have you considered scanning that? Because.
I have it electronically, so it's pretty easy for me to cut and paste. So these didn't take me long at all.
Good.
And it, and even though this is the.
Of course you do, yeah.
Yeah, and what I'll be able to do is so the detail tabs will just become checklist underneath the larger issues. So again, the only ones that I'm gonna have issues with are really, you can see now, Dan, like the budget list doesn't actually fit because I'm not assigning it to anyone yet, other than the council. So you may wanna keep a separate budget list until we get, you know, because that one's a little harder. Or the future list, because you, you can put it in here, but you really don't wanna assign it to anyone because there's no work happening right now.
So why can't, can't it just live in that state in there unassigned? Or can you assign it, maybe, maybe those things need to be assigned to?
What, what do you mean exactly?
So like I, while we're in session, somebody brings up a topic, like tonight was roads discussion. And Dan says, we should take over all the subdivision roads and own them. That's got a budgetary line to it. So I'm keeping, the tab on the workbook for budget is for me to write that down so that when we get to budget season. We look at the list and say, which items are we gonna work on and include in this year's budget? And which ones are maybe not, we changed our mind, we're not gonna do it, or it's, it's valid, but we're gonna have to wait another year.
It helps you create the agenda.
So, yeah, so it just really is a holding list. It's not an active list.
That could be its own bucket.
Yeah.
Okay, so you could have it as budget and then just, but then the other question is, can we not assign someone when we add?
You don't have to assign anybody.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
So that might work, yeah.
That might work.
It's one of those, I'm sure, once we start to use it, we'll.
Well, yeah, yeah.
And the best thing about this is we already pay for it.
Yes, that is nice.
And do you wanna show the reporting?
Yes, so reporting is really pretty simple. So I'm going to just go to Planner. So the way you do this is you go to the Microsoft Planner webpage. Microsoft Planner is technically what the task list is. And so we go to the webpage and you'll see I have my list of teams here. So I go to the one we were just working in and that is right here. So you'll notice this looks quite similar, almost identical to what we were just working in. Except right now I'm on a web browser at tasks.office.com. There's a little menu right here, Export Plan to Excel. And it downloads an Excel file. There, there would be some formatting you might want to do before displaying this, say publicly, like the task ID here is just nonsense. Don't really need that column there. But otherwise you have task name, the bucket name, progress priority, assigned to, created by, created date, start date, due date. Is it recurring? Is it late? True or false? Number of checklist items completed, which is pretty cool, and the label, and then the description. So that's all exportable to the ever so useful Excel.
The notes are not in there though, right?
Well, it's all.
I think.
There at the end.
Was it, yeah, I think actually.
Oh, is that what description is?
That's interesting, isn't it? It's called description and not notes. I don't know why. We found where Microsoft is screwing up.
It, it doesn't look like the comments are on there, which is fine.
That's fine.
That's true.
Because that would be way too much. So interesting.
Yeah.
If you had a macro to convert the data automatically formatted, it would be easy.
It would be.
You'd export it and then run the macro would reformat it.
Yeah, that's.
It's a little punky, but.
I'm not familiar with that, but.
Yeah, I hate that, gross. It's not my favorite thing, but yeah, yeah, there's ways. Yeah, and then of course I did the parking ordinance was the other example, which he just set one up, so.
Cause this is really more of a database than a.
It could be considered a database.
It's, it's, it's a working project management software. And I think, you know, like I said before, I think the list came out of necessity to not lose things. But it's not very workable and to.
Two-dimensional, it's just not.
Yeah, it's not, yeah, exactly. It's not live. It's not alive. And I think from staff standpoint, to have them have to constantly go and look at a list to see, is anything assigned to me? Am I gonna, when do they expect it?
This is fantastic for collaboration.
And I actually also got, because I created the task, I saw the email that went to Kristen that sent her an email saying you have a new task assigned to you. And so I also got it because I was the creator.
A couple thoughts just came to me. One, this is, one, it is gonna create one work, one work item for someone whenever councils change. Like, we're gonna have to go in and edit assignments if there's a new counselor or things like that.
If they're assigned to a counselor, yeah, somebody will have to take over that task.
And then one question, maybe for Kyle, is if Sandy's creating all these items and then she's, and then she goes back. Are we able to edit them?
Can you transfer?
Yeah, can we transfer ownership?
Would, would it stay alive?
That's a good question. So that would probably be here someplace. So in the, the right, on the right-hand side, list of Teams for this town council related projects one, I can have various admin options such as adding members or managing a team. So it's probably here we can assign various roles to.
Change the ownership.
Yeah, so the owner would be changed to Krista.
But would she have to do that before she leaves?
We would want to do that.
They would have to do it.
What if her account is suspended?
My access away.
Yeah, okay, all right.
I had that on my, I have on my to-do when I get back to have a conversation with Kyle about my documents, my email.
Yeah, so we do actually need a protocol for when a counselor leaves because once you kill off their.
Email, their access, their access.
Everything's gone, right?
Not, not sure if it's like absolutely deleted. I think we could probably recover some of it if we just change our minds. But it's definitely something we want to thoroughly vet first before we switch off.
Right, I don't know, maybe we should have like a generic.
Nate?
I wonder about that, like.
Someone like that can always access it. I don't know.
Well, or could you have a, could you have a, like, you know, chair and could that person?
Like a chair.
Yeah, have access and that could be handed off.
Like an alias.
Yeah.
The only downside to that is the, and Nate, I'm gonna let Nate have his hand up. Um, yeah. Who's talking? The only downside to that is you want it to be tied to an email, so. It's great, I, it's great that you wanna, I get the reassignment, but that's gonna happen every time there's staff turnover.
Well, we could have a chair at graymain.org email address, right?
Right, but then you're gonna have the, well, the same problem, I guess, is.
It's something to look into.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have to walk through it because like my email right now, and I've never deleted anything officially. I just keep it in my little recycle. It's, I've got like 3,000 emails.
I've never emptied mine. It's just composted a lot.
Yeah, I've never emptied mine either. I'm keeping it that way because when I leave, you know, FOAA, FAO or whatever, lives on beyond my term. And so my only concern is that you're gonna end up with this massive junk and somebody new coming in, taking over that email.
Well, we could have, but we could have two, like I could have like a, I know we have to pay for that, but.
Well, no, I'm just saying from a, a person who's on the, on the council, I don't want it to be any more complicated than it has to be. And having two emails to remember to go in and check them all the time. I'm sure there's a way for us to.
We've been doing aliases for a few staff members, like.
Yeah.
It's codeoffice@graymain.org.
I think finance director.
Finance director.
Frankly, unless it's junk or phishing, I don't delete anything anymore.
I don't delete anything. I, well, I click delete, it just sits in. I don't ever empty my, my bin.
You would probably, at least the way I would operate with it is I would only, I would use my named email for any communications I was doing. And the public, the public email address that's posted on the website. But we could have this like chair email just internally for organizing or.
Well, you would just need to, I guess my point in that, maybe you just solved it for me, is whoever would be the chair assigning it would have to assign it to their named email in order for them to see that it got assigned and there's updates, is all I'm saying. Cause you wouldn't wanna have to, as chair, you wouldn't wanna have to sign into.
No.
Teams, oops, Teams under this chair.
I agree.
To do work and then also sign into your other thing.
Yeah. You could assign it to yourself.
Yeah, but you could assign it to the named email and then it would work out. So it's just a matter of walking through how it would work and coming up with the easiest approach. But that may solve it right there.
Yeah, I have just one idea, but yeah.
There's got, there's bound to be a way, yeah.
Yeah, well, and there's, I know in Outlook, there's ways for you to display, and I don't know if that's based on the provider, but there's way for you to put multiple emails. There's way for you to put multiple emails into one.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I have that for the admin box.
Yeah, so maybe that's the other option, Krista, is when you open, when you open it.
You get both.
You've got both.
Yeah.
Yes.
To make it workable, yeah.
I think Nate's still waiting.
Yeah, go ahead Nate, sorry.
I was, I was just gonna say a lot of the stuff that you all just said, um. I think I am a strong proponent of role-based email addresses with aliases, we can change aliases and keep the roles. That's what we're doing on staff and should be doing going forward anytime there's a turnover. And for council, you know, having five email addresses and then assigning aliases for the counselor's name, I think is a great approach. We can also export all of the emails out of our uh counselor's uh inbox. And and create a um like an archive record that someone could access. But when it comes to assigning tasks and teams, I think that's the challenge that we're gonna need to address, so that just. Creates another facet or dimension to that conversation. But to to the point of the conversation, every email that's received by a council member, whether it's your personal email. Or your town account is subject to FOA and cannot be deleted or erased, and so. Um, we wanna make sure everybody has a way to maintain those records, uh so that they remain part of the public record after a counselor's term. And so, what what ideas about that on staff?
Yeah, I was gonna say, and I mean, there's server backups too, and I, in the past, when I first came on the council, we asked that question, like. Oh, can we delete our email? Do we have to leave it? And they're like, oh, don't worry about it, well, it's being archived.
Yeah.
And so, but I.
It makes things a whole lot more difficult having a.
I was just gonna say.
Recovering archive to be FOA response, but maybe this is something that I should defer to IT on and come back with a protocol later.
Yeah, well, you're, you're, I think you're, it's a good time to do it, because like I said, I have like three thousand emails.
I mean, exporting them is pretty easy, and it's not gonna take up a lot of space, it would be.
Easier than trying to retrieve it from a server archive.
I wonder if Kyle might wanna create a task on this for our IT team.
I can do that really easily, thanks to Microsoft team.
I love it, I love it.
Okay, alright, so anything else on this, so? The issue is that we're all in agreement, this looks like the transition?
Oh, yeah, I think so, I mean, I.
What'd you say?
I said, how does Marty feel?
Marty's like, just print me a copy and I'll be happy, alright?
Yep.
Yep, there you go.
Kind of old fashioned, but it works, it works for me.
Yeah, if it ain't broke, don't fix it.
That's right.
I do think, though, that, you know, from a reporting standpoint, seeing the Excel stuff is good, but I think that. It's just a skill that I don't have, it's taking that data and then making it into something more graphical, that's more. User friendly for somebody who doesn't know.
But it really is, it, and it, and the first time you do for- formatting, it takes forever, but once you do it, I, it's brain, it's like muscle memory. And you're just boop, 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 boop.
I'm not great with pivot tables and things, but I can for, I can format myself.
I love pivot tables.
They're fun, right?
Yeah, my grocery list is, no.
No.
I'm not that nuts.
That should be easy. Frozen, frozen dairy.
Um, okay, and then the last item is, and I did print this out.
Yes, thank you for doing that, I don't know why the graph on the last page didn't print. Yeah, thanks very much, Kyle.
Well, and I, well, I was wondering that, because I was all excited about the color, and then I was like, when I open it, there's nothing there, so I don't know if it.
I don't know if I can get this on.
Oh, is there supposed to be a graph?
There's a graph on that, yes, there's a graph.
Well, there's a lot of space, and I was like, wait a minute, there must be a.
Nope, there's a graph that didn't print.
Okay.
But I can show you on my computer, easy enough.
So you're looking for us to review this and get back to you with feedback on any of the language.
Oh, there isn't, that's interesting, there isn't on mine either, I wonder what happened, there was one there. Okay, I must have zigged when I should have zagged.
And Dan was pointing out to me earlier that the school sent out their mailer. And. In it, they had an updated um school figure, and so that's why this number you're gonna see on his third page there. The thirteen, four, seven, oh, it's slightly higher, it was.
I was gonna say, that's more, isn't it?
Yeah, it was. It was twelve, nine, something.
Yeah.
Yeah, I did bring that with me.
Yeah, so we're presuming that that's.
I haven't read it yet.
And of course, they're not having their meeting till the eighteenth, so.
There's the night six thirty.
I wonder what caused it to go up.
Well, I don't know, um, and I wasn't sure, I was, I wanted to make sure I was using the right number, but here's the. Where I got the information from, um, oh, yeah, that's not working.
Yeah, so I, what I suggested is that we um. We either have Lauren take a look at the information that's in that, and make sure that it matches to hers. Um, and Nate, if if we could have her do that, you know, Monday, that would be great. Um, and, and or reach out to Sam, or um just to see if he can provide some information on the. Number that's shown there versus what was provided. Because we don't have access to all necessarily their revenue information, so usually they probably give. Lauren a. The number directly, and so. I don't know, I don't know how she would check that, but.
I don't, well, she could call, I mean.
Yeah, she could call and talk, it would actually be better to have her talk to Sam, probably.
Well, not Sam, I would have her call um.
Diane.
Diane, thank you.
What's the difference between the total appropriated by municipality and the total raised?
Yeah.
By district assessments by municipal?
Right.
What are those different?
Yeah, maybe that, maybe that's a lower number. Yeah, see, this is what I wasn't sure.
Difference there?
Yeah.
Because this would be lower, cuz they were telling us.
Yeah. That would be considerably lower, though.
Yeah, a lot lower.
So it was eleven, or last, or she, it was eleven, yeah. So, yeah. So it would be better to have her talk to Diane and just make sure that we've got the right number.
Cuz we really, we're only concerned what we have to raise in property taxes, not what's been.
Well, that's what I'm talking about, we, it's the same with us, our total is shown, but it doesn't subtract out the.
State revenue share.
Revenue, right.
And the revenue.
The figure that we have on this sheet is after revenue removal for the s- school. And county. So we may be missing that piece. Cuz they probably have to ask for the total as well, and then.
Okay, it's waiting for me to be let in.
Yeah, so it's eleven, nine on her last spreadsheet, so if it went to eight, three, that seems like too big of a drop.
Right.
And the other one seems too big of an increase, so there's something going on there.
Oops, hang on.
I have a question.
Meet yourself on.
Here we go, yes, sir.
Why does that number and that number all the same?
Because our municipal expense, no, the municipal expenses are, include the CIP.
Yep.
Okay.
So, let's see, I think I'm all set there.
Yeah, let's ask Dan that, yeah, we'll ask Dan that one. Just a second, let's see, get to that. Marty's pointing out that the uh CIP total here that says FY twenty-four is in your FY twenty-three column.
Yeah, hang on one second.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, no, surprised that missed.
With the district's contributions to the total cost of funding and public education.
Okay, so.
Oh, there it is.
So this is, this is the first page here that everybody got.
Okay, so look at your CIP. FY twenty-three, oh, no, go back up, second one, CIP and municipal expenses. That is under FY twenty-three, and then look at tab three. Uh, I mean, tab two, CIP budget and graph. It's the three, seven, nine, one number. Which is FY twenty-four, so there's a little.
Oh, that's um, hang on. Oh, is that because, did I do the calculation? Let me see, let me go back.
Ooh, I like that graph.
So it's three, seven, nine, one, eight. That's for, yes, but then it's twenty-four that I wanted.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I've got. I took the wrong set of numbers.
Yeah, that's all, yeah.
Which I can fix. Thank you, Marty, good catch.
It's why accounting training, he says.
Good.
You're funny.
That was.
Okay, and so we have the question with the school, so if we could get Diane to help Lauren to make sure we have the latest figure. That they're gonna present.
Okay.
I really like that graph.
This one?
Yeah.
Looks like a bagel.
Yeah, I was able, one of the things I liked about it is I was able to change the orientation of the data. So that it was clockwise instead of counterclockwise.
Right, yeah.
And I think it um, it's, it. It kinda works better, because I think generally people tend to move clockwise, just, I think it's.
It's just nat- natural.
Yeah, it's kinda naturally, so you've got the biggest chunk first. So they aren't in order as far as the way they would appear on the ballot, they're in order of from greatest to least amount.
Yeah.
But I don't think that's gonna matter.
No, cuz as long as they can find the two figures.
Yeah.
Like that number should match.
Yes, I'll fix that.
And then the total will match the warrant, then you're good.
So I'll go in and, and.
Yeah.
The other question that I had for you is, as you read these, there's news and information. That kind of fits under library and recreation, but it's not necessarily in the library and recreation budget.
Okay.
I kind of, the more I thought about that, the more I thought, well, that doesn't really matter either. Because people are are more likely to make the connection, this is about the library, than to go to the budget and find out that that's really in. Somewhere else.
My one concern with putting it in this budget, um, the, the, the content you've put under library and parks and rec. Is that's what we're funding with the, with the bond and the, and some other funding sources?
Right.
So it doesn't actually get included in this, and I, I don't know if the, they're gonna think we're like double spending, if they go to vote on the bond and see it again.
Fair enough, because it will say in the bond article what it is about, yep, that's.
Well, I think you could maybe just add a note here that it's under the bond, because I think.
Well, the other option I was gonna offer you is that this, this does fit on, on one page when you, you know, when you go to print preview. I could just put the things that specifically. Fit under each of those headings, administration, CIP, library, parks and recreation, and then either at the beginning before this.
Or at the bottom.
At the bottom after this.
Yeah.
I could just put, you know.
The bond, the bond, yeah.
Stuff about the budget.
Here's the thing that people need to understand is if, if.
Well, that's a tough one.
This very hard one.
When you tell people what they need to understand.
Well, when we're, when we're talking about TIF buckets, or um.
Yeah, or SD, or, yep.
Or bonds.
Yep.
Uh, if they don't give us permission to use those tools, it come right back here.
Well, right, but in a separated.
Issue is, this is, you know, an increase, yes, but there, it's, if we're honest, there was a lot more. And because we're trying to use a variety of financial tools, overall, it's actually saving the money. Um, the interest on the, the land acquisition piece and, and um. The five-year bond, which is a higher payment, but less interest, and you know, those little kind of movements.
Or also spreading the payments out rather than putting them all in one.
In one year, which is, you gotta pay for the septic, cuz sooner or later it's gonna collapse, and if it collapses, it's gonna be more expensive.
And then we won't have rec fields behind us.
Exactly, the loss of, of use would be um very costly, so um, yeah, I like that idea, Dan.
Yeah.
Just have a, a lower or up above, because I think it's important to talk about the land acquisition too, and. And that's a big, i- if people keep asking us, and, and we've seen a lot of support for the infrastructure projects. And they want, well, why can't you do X and why can't you do Y? That requires land acquisition, and, and so we need, you know, we need to make sure that they understand why that's important too. And then Nate, I think you got a price for sending out um the mailer.
Josh did, yeah, and I noticed in his price that it was four pages folded in an envelope.
Okay.
So.
So it'll be cheaper.
We, we gave you the high-end, biggest color thing, so you can sort of, uh, it's not too scale cheaper. You'll be surprised at how much not cheaper it is to go with a smaller format, but there are some cost savings.
Okay, so if we can try to get the remaining items finalized on Monday. Then we could potentially give them an example of what we're looking for and get a more fine-tuned.
It, it, it might be a good idea for us to get your content and then test drive it on different formats and see. You know, I think some sensitivity to using the largest font we can fit, uh, so everybody can, you know, read it, uh, probably a good idea. But why, why don't we work from getting the, your final product and, and see what we come up with that looks good?
So I guess we're looking at, we were talking before about one page, you know, sort of cardstock. Front and back, so part of that's gonna be, a chunk of that's gonna be for addressing, so it's not gonna be two full pages front and back.
Yeah.
Um, I hear what Nate's saying about size, you know, we don't wanna have to send a little magnifying glass with each one.
Yeah, but I, yeah, we, but this is really readable, so this could go smaller.
I think that, that was another question I guess I had, the gray, I think the gray is still pretty readable, but I think it makes. The dollars stand out, so it's not confusing to have the text in with the dollars.
I like it.
Okay, so that.
I definitely like that, cuz if it was all black, it would just bleed.
Yeah, it would be too much, and I think it would be confusing then, cuz the text and the. Dollar information would have the same value, and you wouldn't see it.
Right.
This page here, I can make that much smaller.
Yeah.
My question is, do you need the numbers?
Oh.
Or do you just need the chart?
You know what, that's not a bad idea, because here, remember, the thing that we're trying to do is to send out. The most important information for them to better understand, but you're gonna, at the end somewhere. Have a statement that says, go to the website if you want me, more detail.
I think we should put a QR code on it, so that people can just, you know, scan it.
Yeah, and so if that's the case, then, yeah.
Could you add the numbers or percentages within the graph labels?
I could, but they're pretty small.
Okay.
Yeah, I, you know, you can make the graphs pretty small, and they're still meaningful to look at, cuz they give you essential proportion. But um I did try and figure out how to um. I just don't know how, I think it could be done, I think that you could put the percents on the outside of the graph.
Yeah, like around the circle, yeah.
Yeah, but I'm, I haven't figured out how to do that, I also just, I don't use Microsoft products, I use like Open Office, so.
Yeah.
There is a translation hurdle there. I always save things in Excel, but it doesn't always make up.
I said, get ready, Kyle.
Well, in the past, what I've always done is I've always inevitably got it to basically PDFs, because other than that, it just, it just is a mess. And probably, and, and actually Kyle said that PowerPoint is probably a much more useful tool for, for doing this.
Yeah, they are, it is pretty workable, I haven't used it a whole lot, but.
So there's this one, and then there's, and I, from a style standpoint, in this particular case, I sort of like the three D.
Yeah, I like the three D.
Yeah.
I think it, especially when you get into smaller slices.
Yeah, yeah.
It is a little easier to.
See it.
To see it. You know, if you.
That we understand, yeah.
If I play with different charts.
Yeah. And then the other, the last graph, we'll have to wait to get the answer on that school assignment, allotment.
Um, you can see, though, that in the end, the municipal total was less than fifty percent.
Yeah.
If the school. If the school, if that school number's correct.
And that may not be the case. It may be lower.
And I wanted, cause I've got, this is, I think I'm comparing apples to oranges here.
You are.
Because I've got the whole town budget.
Yeah, no, you can't do that. That's right.
I've got to have just the part that's committed.
You've gotta subtract out the, that's right. And that's where that funky spreadsheet disagreement between us and that one. No, the other one. Yeah, use this one. Because that, um, the, and I understand why it's done that way. Cause mathematically speaking, it's easier to, to put everything in one section that are alike and then subtract out. But technically speaking, the school appropriations in the county already netted out their revenue.
Yeah.
So, it, again, if we had our druthers and we could have buckets, all of the property tax money that we collect would be in a property tax bucket. And then we'd have revenue that's generated locally and revenue that's generated by the state. When this, when we write the check to the school, monthly, quarterly, however we write that check, we would take it all out of the property tax bucket. We would never take it out of revenue that we're generating.
Right.
If you look at that mill rate calculation sheet, that's what it does. It puts the expenses at the top. Those already subtract out revenue they're receiving. But our revenue is then spread across the four entities from mathematical standpoint, because it's a calculation sheet. That's not reality.
Yeah.
And so, the twelve million's the total, but it's not net of the revenue. Any revenue we generate would come out of our share.
So, I just fixed the graph.
Or go towards our share. Yeah, right.
So.
So, again, this is the total.
Yellow is the school, the blue is us.
Yeah. The difference here though, is the increase this year is less proportional.
Yes.
And that's the piece that's kind of missing. And, and, um, I'm working with Nate on, and Kyle on the newsletter. So, Nate, I noticed in the updated version, you had updated the percent in that page three to match this. Which is, if you look at the total expense that we're expending, the school, the county and the town, this is about, this is the share. But if you're looking at this year increases, we're, we have, we are higher share this year. And so, that's where that spreadsheet that I gave you, during the bottom half of that.
I just, yeah, I think it's important for us to be consistent on that.
Yeah.
And even if it's just consistently labeling it total versus proportion of change.
Yeah, something to that effect, yeah. And see that number, so she's looking at that eight million number, Dan, in that flyer, cause it says.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know which one is, what was the other one? Thirteen and one was eight, like, did I?
Yeah, thirteen and one's eight, so, yeah.
I don't know which one's right.
Yeah.
I don't know either.
Cause the, the, their definition doesn't address which one means what.
Right. Yeah. So, if you look at last year's commitment, net of revenue, and this year's commitment, net of revenue, and you look at the differences that are generating, the mill rate increase this year, our percentages are, are more, more us, less them. And that's what that spreadsheet does. So, um, Nate, do you still have that spreadsheet that I created?
I do, and I forwarded a copy of that to Counselor McGuire this afternoon.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, I hadn't had a chance to look at it.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty much the same. It's the same material.
Okay, okay. So, yeah, I think, like you said, we just need to, you know, I think it's important to advise the residents that you're voting this year on a mill rate increase. And one thing we have to continue to state is we don't know what the mill rate's gonna be. There's, nobody in this room knows. In fact, Lauren doesn't know. And she won't know until she goes to commit, because she won't have final value numbers. She won't have final revenue sharing numbers. She won't have, um, all of that finalized information in order to calculate the mill rate. So, we are projecting and we're trying to be conservative so that people are, are understanding. They're hopefully voting on the top line and it may come down. So, it's important to state, you know, this is, this is what's happening this year. But it's, I think it's also important to do what Dan's doing here, which is overall, the, the school budget is over twenty-five million now?
Thirty-one.
Did you say thirty-one million? Okay.
Almost thirty-two million now.
So, the school budget is thirty-one million dollars. Our budget is, you know, nine and CIP, so twelve.
It was twelve million when I was on the board, I think?
Yeah.
Ten million, I think we broke.
Right. So, we might have a, we might have a year where we're doing a little catch-up on, on our share of the mill in order to do things that we need to do. But overall, we're not even close to what the school, um, deals with as far as budgetary items.
Well, and it's still, the thing I feel a little bit better about personally is that when I tell people that, you know, if, if you wanna have an effect on your taxes, you need to go to the school board meeting, not ours, is, is still true.
Yes.
Even though I was giving out bad information as far as the percentage of the increase. Even with our increase this year, um, you know, we're still
It barely moves the needle. Yeah, yeah. It doesn't move the needle.
In fact, I think, I am, I should look. I think that actually that percent, our percentage has actually gone down this year.
Yeah, if their number is higher. Yeah. So, we'll have to. So, we need to have, um, Lauren check with Diane on Monday to see if we can get a finalized projected number for gray to use in our flyer and make sure that we're consistent with what they just mailed out. And then we need to take a look at the text and get any additional feedback to Dan. Dan, you're gonna try to update your document to get to staff on Monday so they can play with the formatting. And then we can get a better price.
And I think, uh, I'm beginning to think, and maybe Kyle wants to weigh in on this, that I really should just pull together the information and stop messing with the format.
Yeah. I think that's a good idea and then just work with them to.
They can, yep.
Yep.
Cause I do have to have this all buttoned up, cause it's gone.
Yeah, when are you leaving?
Next Friday.
Okay, we're both.
And I, yeah, and I won't be back until the fifth of June.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
I can't recall if we, if we discussed this, but did we discuss intentionally leaving revenues off of these kind of shorthand sheets and then just putting them on the more expanded?
Yeah, I mean, I think what we have is, yeah, well, all we have is the total revenue um, for local and state. Um, and the CIP is net of the capital reserve
Yeah.
extra. So, Dan and I were talking a little bit about it, that spreadsheet. We had the same loop, you and I. It just, there's just no easy way to do comparisons this year.
I know.
Until next year.
I just know we're gonna get the question, cause it came up in, um,
Yeah.
the public hearing, like where the revenues.
So, I, I think that if we leave it off this and we point with the QR code to go to the website and then if people have specific questions, it would be a lot easier to answer specific questions than to try to generalize, cause there's just no easy way to do it, is kind of my thought.
But you're getting these expense figures.
Those are from the FY twenty-four.
Are from the FY twenty-four summary sheet we had? Or for they, where are they, where are they coming from?
They match the Warren article.
Yeah.
The Warren article?
I've just been using the Warren article.
And that Warren article's from the trio.
The trio.
The big trio, which is, obviously, we'd like to dump that into that summary and add the revenue and do the comparison. And it just isn't possible this year.
No, I understand. I'm just trying to make sure we're putting the right numbers in from the right places.
Sources, oh, yeah, absolutely. But I agree with you. The more we've done this this year, I think there's, uh, that, I think there's a methodology here that we would behoove us to use going forward.
I like it.
You know, we start with our expenses and then off to the side, you know, I think this, we've talked about, you know, can we break out CIP from municipal expenses on the warrant in the future?
That would be very helpful.
Because if we could, then we could just do those expenses.
Yeah.
Then you could do the CIP piece and then you could do your revenue piece and your CIP revenue.
Then add in the school, the county, the TIF.
And then at the end, you'd get down to the calculation. So, it really would just, you know, you pour it all in at the top and you, and you get the answer at the bottom.
I mean, for, for me, the conversations I've had, maybe there's some people who are interested in, well, are, are you projecting auto excise tax is gonna go down or up? I mean, maybe there's some people out there that are asking those. I'm sure there are. But so far, all of the conversations I have is just bottom-line it for me.
Yeah.
That's all they want, you know, and, and then, I, I won't say that's all they want. They want it bottom-lined. And then if there is an increase, they wanna know what they're getting.
Yep.
And so, I think that, you know, that's the bulk of the information. And there'll be other people who wanna have, you know, can you, we had a, a resident at the end of that last meeting where we're walking out, is there a way to dump that into Excel? So, there are some that wanna get in there and crunch.
Yeah.
But, uh, you know, limited with the trio software and.
I actually think, you know, kind of like you've done with this.
Yeah.
I actually think we could almost create, uh, an outline that, at the beginning of the budget conversation. We could actually start to fill this in as we go.
Yeah.
So, really, when we get to the end, it's ninety-five percent done.
Right, we could
Yeah, I agree.
See where we can make cuts more easily.
Yeah, and if, if, yeah, and if we set it all up, then yeah, you could do what-ifs and, and.
And then you have a consistent document every year.
Yeah.
And you can do those comparisons, so.
And so, I mean, I'm kind of, after this year.
Well, the council retreat.
Feeling a little gun shy about using spreadsheets.
Yeah.
But I think we're never gonna be able to completely get away from it.
No.
No.
All right, anything else? We're running just a tad long, but it's Friday night.
Okay, I think I know what you want.
All right. Thank you very much for doing that, Dan. I appreciate that.
Yeah, you're welcome.
It's a lot of work.